Okay, it is 7:00 PM on Thursday, November 16th, and I call this meeting to the Bellevue Planning Commission order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madden, Kane.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Baumgartner.
Present.
Jacobson.
Here.
Ackley.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Ritz. Thank you.
We have a quorum. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found in the back vestible of this hearing room. At this time, I would ask that all commissioners and audience members please silence or turn off their cell phones or any other electronic devices that could disrupt our proceedings. Also, please note that the emergency exits are behind you, and once you're out to the left in the hallway, go either left or right and follow us to exit the building. If you happen to have a health issue during the meeting or another issue arises, please let me know and we'll call 911. Fire extinguishers and a defibrillator device are located just outside the vestible as well, and the restrooms are down that way as well. Thank you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to revise or approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of October 19th, 2017.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2017 regular meeting.
Second?
A motion by Mr. Casey, a second by Ms. Smith. Thank you. Commissioners, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. At this time, I'd accept in due record all staff reports, attachments, handouts regarding each application. Staff, any updates?
No.
No updates? Do we have a motion to accept anything? All the records and applications?
So moved.
Moved. First proposed by Mr. Ackley, second?
Second.
Ms. Kane, thank you. Commissioners, please vote. Thank you.
All in favor, motion carried.
Okay, at this time, we will move to our consent agenda for this evening. We have no items on our consent agenda, so we will move to the public hearing for this evening. We have one public evening hearing this evening. I will announce the case, then ask if there are any updates from the planning department. After that, the applicant will have an opportunity to present their request. After the applicant has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony that they would like considered in the record. Those testifying should come to the podium, state and spell their name and address, and sign in for the record. Testimony should be limited to three minutes, and I reserve the right to shorten that time if we have a large number of people coming forward to testify. After testimony is taken, the applicant shall have the opportunity for rebuttal, after which I will close the public hearing, and I'll invite the commissioners to make their wishes known. Those wishes may include requests for clarifications from the applicant, other discussion points, as well as making a motion to approve or disapprove, which will be followed by a second as desired by the commissioners. At that time, I'll restate the motion as needed, resolve any issues related to the motion, and second, and with the commissioner members, then call for a vote. As the applicant presents their request, public testimony is heard, and the commissioners discuss the case. Please address requests to the chair for recognition so we can get comments on the record in an orderly manner. Above all, please treat others who are speaking in the same manner as you would like to be treated when speaking. Our first and only public hearing tonight is a request to rezone lots 22, 23, 26, and 27, Spring Ridge, lots 1 and 2, Spring Ridge replat 1, from RS 72 to RD 60, for the purpose of single-family residential development. The applicant is Orchard Valley. The general location is 21st Street and Gindy Drive. The case is Z-1709-05. Staff, any updates?
No, there are none.
No updates? Applicant, if you would come forward, sign in and state your name and present your request, please.
Melvin Sudbeck, 16255 Woodland Drive. What we're asking for is, we have the six lots that are up on the screen, lots 22 through 27, lots 1 and 2 of replat 1, Spring Ridge. What we're asking for is, they're currently zoned RS 72 and are looking to take them to RD 60. The reason we're doing that is, this project took a couple of years to get through. It took several different shapes, several different workings to get it to the stage it is at. What it comes down to is probably a mere oversight on my part. These lots were sized and intended to be the RD 60 from the start. Like I said, it took many different revisions, many different layouts, reviewing all the documents many, many times, and I missed this detail on it. When we look at the lots themselves, they're more consistent with the lots to the east, which on the overhead is the lots on the right-hand side. Those are the RD 60 lots. The RS 72 lots are to the left-hand side, or west of 21st Street. The RD 72 was never intended on our part. We realize it was, is the way it was documented, sent in. We didn't realize that until we applied for a building permit, of which we had a house sold on one of the lots, and which it came up that our side yard requirement didn't match. So we went back and looked and seen what the issue was. We did take that lot and did administrative replat on it because we have an obligation to build a house for the folks that we signed a contract with. So we added a foot and a half on 2, which is showing as Lot 2 up there. We're asking for the RD 60. The lots all face the RD 60 lots. We don't feel that the larger lots are going to benefit, and we don't feel from a marketing standpoint that we're going to be able to sell the larger lots for more money facing the smaller lots and the smaller product. We have basically two lot sizes and two different-sized products that we're building currently in the subdivision. So like I say, merely was an oversight on my part of where the line got drawn. When you physically look at the lot sizes, they don't match what we have in our larger lots to the west portion of the project.
Great, thank you. Anything else to add? Okay. If you would, we'll go to our public testimony. If anyone cares to provide public testimony in this matter, whether in favor or in opposition, please come forward, state your name, and sign in. Seeing nobody coming to the podium, we will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Couple of questions for staff, I guess. The last page in our package, I see that's dated April 1 of '14, so is that where the, again, a prior draft had the RS 72 shown on those lots, if I'm reading this correctly? And then, I guess, the subsequent or the final?
And this is what you're talking about that's up here on the overhead?
Yes, yeah.
This is, this was sent or submitted with, as a zoning exhibit, with the Spring Ridge plat, and it showed, obviously, this area being RS 72, RD 60 down here, with 21st Street being the boundary between the two zoning districts.
So again, the initial was shown that way?
Yes.
But for some reason, the later iteration, it was switched in the paperwork or something?
The, nothing was switched.
Or it's consistent with? In other words, that is the plan?
That is the way the zoning was approved.
From day 1, it continues to this day?
Yes.
Okay.
What happened was, these five lots actually are smaller than the other ones. I don't recall us ever discussing having RD 60 lots on the west side of 21st Street. Again, like I said, the 21st Street was always kind of the boundary between the RD 60 and the RS 72 lots.
So if we think of it from a, can you bring up the satellite map? You know, ghost plating is one of the things we're supposed to think about? Or, in other words, if that lot to the south, tax lot 13A, if somebody ever wanted to come in and develop that, would we just drop 21st Street straight down? And then you'd have lots backing up to 22, 23, 24, 26?
Are you talking here?
No, sir. Let me have your point. In other words, if that house ever left from a ghost plating perspective, if we were going to redevelop that area, 21st Street would drop down, and we'd end up with lots continuing south there so that they back up?
Probably, and then maybe probably something similar to this, cul-de-sac up against the freeway. Not sure how many would fit there, what would fit there, since we've never done that. But if this were to develop differently and this house went away, it would be logical that this would, 21st Street would continue south.
And again, the theory would be you'd continue or allow the RG 60 to the east, since that's, again, the smaller houses, smaller lots against the highway, and then as you continue to go west, larger houses as you get further into Spring Creek?
Yes.
Question, I guess, in terms of the, again, they are visibly smaller lots. If we enforce the bigger setbacks, what does that do for us in terms of what's the square footages of the houses that'll end up going on these compared to if it was an RG 60?
I can't tell you about the houses in particular. The side yard setback is what would really be the difference here. The RS 72 has seven-foot side yards. The RD 60 has a five-foot, and then also the street side yards are 15 and 20. There is one lot that was platted as non-conforming. It is Lot 26, only has 60 feet of frontage. It's required to have 65. That is a not buildable lot.
So we did a plat with a lot in it that's not buildable currently?
Yes, we did.
What do we do with that?
We advised, Mr. Sudbeck, when he first came in a few months ago, our recommendation would be to replat the five, the six lots into five lots, so that they would conform, as well as, he would have five buildable lots instead of. They'd also be a bigger-sized lot as well.
And if that goes to RG 60, it's a buildable lot as it is?
Yes, it is.
Just the 60-foot? Have you ever had this situation before where we approve a plat that, again, based on the zoning, the lot is unbuildable?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah? Sounds like there's, again, some errors on both sides, maybe on the final design and drawings here.
Admittedly, we should have caught that when they brought that in. I'll tell you, if we had at the time, our recommendation would have been the same to make that lot bigger. As our intent was that, or we understood the intent to be RS 72 on that side of the street.
And what's currently shown is 1 and 2, those were replatted so that whichever one of them he had a house built on, you could meet the setbacks?
I believe it was Lot 1 or 2. 2, 2, he had a house sold on that. He's got a building permit now. He couldn't meet the seven-foot side yard setback requirement with the RS 72. He moved this lot line slightly so that he could make that seven-foot.
Slightly south? And then Lot 2 was still big enough, or vice versa?
He moved this lot line, actually slightly north from where, or...
2 was built on, Mr. Sudbeck?
2 was where he wanted to build. It was this middle lot line that moved slightly to the north to give him the width he needed on 2.
And still leaves that as a buildable lot?
Yes. All these lots are buildable, other than number 26. We believe he'll have, probably have trouble with 27 and 22 because of the street side yard requirement. But that's not to say you couldn't build on them.
So is there any, well, nothing fits on 26 based on the 60-foot width then?
Right, that's a not buildable lot.
That's, if I may, that's true for both the 72 and the 60? Or just the 72?
It would be buildable other than the RD 60.
Okay.
It's the 60-foot lot width that's the issue on that one.
72, okay.
As opposed to 65 requirement in the RS 72.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Shuchek, did you receive any correspondence at all from the neighbors in that area?
From the neighbors? No, we didn't.
Okay. It looks, am I reading this correctly? That where these lots are located, everything adjacent to them is the RS 72?
Yes, there's RD 60 across the street.
Right.
But everything on the west side of 21st Street is RS 72.
Ms. Smith?
Question for staff. During the planning approval, was it made clear to the developer that zoning on the west side of 21st Street would be the RS 72?
That's what he applied for. And again, the exhibit that was out there initially was the exhibit they submitted showing all the RS 72 on the west side of the street.
And I have a couple of questions for Mr. Sudbeck.
If you would step forward to the podium, since you've already signed in, if you would just state your name so the microphone picks it up. Thanks.
Melvin Sudbeck.
Thank you.
Mr. Sudbeck, you mentioned that the lots in question are more consistent with the lots to the east, which have the RD 60 zoning. What is the nature of that consistency? Is it the lot size? Is there some other factor that creates that consistency that you mentioned?
Yeah, predominantly lot size. We're building a pretty consistent 50-foot-wide product in there is what we've set those lots up for. And so we need a minimum width of 60 feet on our lots for the east side.
If we were to leave the zoning the same and come up with a waiver for that Lot 26 to make it buildable, do you have a product that fits on there to meet setback otherwise?
The seven-foot side yards? We'd come up with a product that would fit it. I mean, we're going to be down to a two-car garage, where we're trying to do three cars for most of the speculative product. Now, if somebody comes in and wants a two-car, we're going to build them a two-car, but it's going to, we're going to drop from a three to a two, narrow it up, maybe a little bit deeper. So, yeah, we'd advise a product that would fit.
Mr. Sudbeck, it's great to be in America where we go down to just a two-car garage instead of a three, right?
When two was a luxury, it was not too long ago.
Cheapers. Mr. Shuchek, obviously, I was just talking out loud there, but again, somehow we got a, either 26 becomes buildable somehow, or we've got a wasted, we've got a wasted lot here. Unless you combine 26 and 27, then you're planting a house on there that doesn't exactly meet the rest of the neighborhood either. Is there, is there a way that if we leave it as RS 72, but do some kind of a waiver for the, again, we obviously missed it going in on the 60-foot frontage here? How do we make that thing buildable without combining it with 27?
There's probably two ways that it could happen. The board of adjustment has the ability to grant a waiver. I'll tell you what I think the board of adjustment would do. Again, I don't sit on the board, but just my experience is, since this was something that they platted, he did it to himself, and the board would not look at that favorably. Again, I don't know if that's ultimately how, if they would then, on the other hand, would say, "If the city approved this, we'll give it to you." I don't know. My thought is that they wouldn't approve it. If you think differently, let me know. Tammy attends the meetings. The other option is designating that lot an RS 72 PS lot, which would allow the reduced setbacks with the PS zoning. I would say that you could not do that this evening. It's not the request as far as.
Just a quick note.
Go ahead.
The RS 70 is not going to be, I don't feel it's going to do any increased value on those lots. I mean, what it's going to force us to do is build a smaller product on it instead of building what we're aiming to do, which is a 250 to 280 value roughly on those lots. If we jump to the west side, we're in that 325 to 375 price range. We're not going to go with the bigger product. We're going to stay with what we're doing on the east side because they face the, they face those houses. We only have one and a half lots that actually backs up to the 70 zoning there on the west side. So it's not like they all back up to it. They're actually more influenced by the east side and the smaller zoning.
Well, for myself, I could see it either way. I mean, it sounds like we've got error on both sides on the, again, somehow not catching that. It seems like we can't leave a lot unbuildable with a zoning that we approved and a plat we approved. On the other hand, again, the argument of consistency on each side of 21st Street makes sense. And again, the ghost plating, when you think about it, if we were to continue to drop south, if that house ever leaves, it would make sense that, again, the Spring Creek houses are larger and of bigger value. And when we approve the development here, again, I think Mr. Sudbeck did a good job of intentionally trying to get houses of closer, similar value to what was there, and then made them smaller as you went farther east next to the interstate. So...
If it helps, the house on the big lot is fairly new. It's not an old farmhouse or anything. It's a fairly new house.
Ghost plating is a 50-year process, right? But again, it's one of those things you think about as to what will we do if somebody ever comes forward with that lot, which someday somebody might. What do you guys think?
It seems that in the absence of what might be characterized as a mistake on both parts, and I'm not necessarily saying there was a mistake on both parts, but putting aside that issue, there is, I think, the argument, and a very good argument, that for the sake of consistency with the adjacent properties, that that zoning should remain RS 72. If you weigh the, I'll call them again, mistakes, perhaps it's a wash.
If I may ask Mr. Sudbeck some questions? So how are you planning on meeting the side yard requirement? Were you going to replat those six and two of five, five lots?
No, we're just going to just make a narrower product.
Okay, and is that where you, those would normally be three-car garages on the RS 72 side? And two-car garages on the 60 side?
No, three-car on the 60 side.
Oh, okay, on the 60 side. Which is the east side that we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Okay, so those are three-car?
Yes.
Though they're smaller lots?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a smaller project, product?
Well, yeah, three-car garage, roughly 1,300 to 1,600 square feet on the east side for a ranch. And on the west side, we'd be in that 1,700, 1,800, up to about 2,200 for a ranch on the larger lots.
And was it your understanding when you applied and actually submitted the plating that it would be five lots that would be buildable? Was that your understanding from the initiation?
No, the six.
Okay, you believed it was six that were buildable at that time?
Well, like I say, the RS 70 on those six lots was an oversight on my part because, like I say, this plat took many, many, took what, two years? Two and a half years to get through, and many negotiations with many landowners to get it to where it is. So there's a lot of reviewing, thinking we were there, and then it was re-reviewing, re-reviewing. So like I say, the error's on my part.
And so I guess, just from my understanding, is the intention then, single-family homes on all of those?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So following.
Sorry, go ahead, Mitch.
Because you've already sold Lot 2, correct, is that house, if you build on all six, will that house look considerably different than the other five?
It'll be a little bit wider, yes.
It's still three-car?
Yes, the one we're doing is a three-car, yes. And we have a pending contract on Lot 26, but it takes the RD 60 zoning to make it work.
Mr. Sudbeck, you mentioned that there were lengthy negotiations with the other property owners. It seems that the understanding of the adjacent property owners was that the zoning would be RS 72. If we were to change that to take care of what I consider to be an unfortunate situation, perhaps we're not then acting in the best interest of those property owners that, again, assume that the zoning would be the RS 72 and that that zoning would be compatible with their zoning. It's a very nice development on, well, on both sides, but particularly on the west side. The point about these lots facing the RD 60 zoning and the homes in that zone, there is separation that's created by the street.
The property owner directly to the west, Brian, I can't recall his last name, he actually called me and asked what was happening. I explained to him, it's going to be, the lots are going to be consistent once to the east of it. And he said, "Great, I have no problems. I'm not coming to the meeting." It's what he said. He goes, "I don't want to come." So I did visit with him. He actually reached out to me, and he didn't have any issues with what we're asking for.
Which lot was that for?
It's a tax lot. Is it 3 or 13, just directly, yes, that one there.
Well, I have to say that in our previous hearings, which, in this area, the neighbors were very concerned about appearance and compatibilities and, you know, consistency, I guess, is the word I'm looking for, in that area. And I wonder if we change that, how it's going to affect the people in that neighborhood? But then I see, I have to somewhat agree with Mr. Ackley's point of, you know, you could go either way. They're going to, I mean, your homes are nicely built and attractive, things like that. I'm just really confused right at this point.
If we leave him the RS 72, the neighbors are going to get a smaller product, is what's going to happen. They're not, if we switch it, they're going to actually get a bigger product.
So when you're talking about the smaller, it's just the garage?
Well, no, the house will proportionally shrink down. Will probably be 1,100 to 1,300 square-foot house in a two-car garage.
Compared to?
1,300 square feet.
Okay.
Just, on a 65-foot lot, if he's got the seven-foot side yards, you've got to take 14 feet out of that width instead of 10 feet. He's got an extra four feet of width to play with on. Am I saying that right?
Yes, yeah.
On what?
If he had a, if he had the RD 60 in a 65-foot lot, he would have 55 feet of width to build in. The RS 72, the seven-foot side yard setbacks, would have 51 feet of width.
So for my clarification, then, is not, I guess, replotting these to five lots an option? Or is that an option?
It is, and that's, again, what we advised him initially when he first came in with it, that make the six and do it five.
But that really doesn't work now because we have a set of footings in on one of the lots. So we can't shift everything around. Like I say, we had a contractual obligation to fulfill, and so we had to do what we needed to do on that house, so.
So what could you do then with that existing lot? If you just, if you, you can't make it five lots, but how could you recover from this and still build homes?
Well, we lose a lot. I mean, we've got, that lot is low $40,000, so we lose that. I mean, we've got, that lot is low forty thousand dollars, so we lose that. Nobody's gonna, you know, we're not gonna recover that by making the two lots next to it larger. People would accept it and take it, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna financially do any good for us.
Sir, again, for my clarification, so what is the home size that's gonna go in on Lot 2?
Lot 2, that house is right at fifteen hundred square feet.
And that's consistent with the homes in the seventy-two zoning or the sixty zoning?
The sixty. The sixty's gonna be thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred roughly.
I just wanted clarification on that because you're already, I guess, in my mind, establishing a precedent then on the size of homes for those six lots by building one that's already conforming to the sixty. Is that accurate?
Yes.
My understanding, okay, thanks.
Any additional thoughts or comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Shuchek, walk me through what that RS-72 PS is, you mentioned, again, if we try to make 26 a buildable lot.
The PS is the planned subdivision overlay, and it allows for a variation in the setbacks. It, under the ordinance, there are requirements really that it should follow as far as something unique about the land, you know, maybe you can say that, maybe not. I guess it's kind of self-created, it's not a ditch or a waterway or there's something unique about the land. But that would be a separate zoning ordinance, a separate zoning overlay for the lot. And we do it on, off and on, on whole subdivisions, basically. The, I'll tell you, where it didn't, where it was approved, not on a whole subdivision, these lots down here, do you have a different area? These lots, part of Spring Creek, have a RS-72 PS, which I think allowed, if I remember right, the reasoning was because of the trees and whatnot back here, they were allowed a reduced front yard. That's the type of situation where, you know, it's not the whole subdivision, it's just these specific lots because of the trees and moving the houses away from the drainage area.
Sure. Well, we certainly don't have a unique topographic on that, but we also, again, I think we have some culpability here for approving a plat for a lot that's not buildable. And it seems like this RS-72 PS would fix it. The house isn't gonna look any different than it otherwise would in the neighborhood. Maybe that's one way to go about it, which, again, Mr. Sudbeck, your application here tonight, we could not take action on if you have further discussions with staff on that and would reach an agreement on it. But that would be my suggestion because otherwise, we have a, you have a big lot with one house on it, or we have a plat we all saw with six houses, and one of them can't be built on the way it's currently zoned, which shouldn't have happened. Or, I guess, another suggestion, we could make a recommendation for denial and follow staff's report. And the analogy I come up with is similar to what we did on Cedar Island Road where those folks wanted to subdivide their yards so the kids could build next door, and it was in the AQ zone. And from a planning perspective, we said, "We shouldn't do that." And the city went, "Yeah, we're gonna let you." So, it becomes an issue for Mr. Cook and company at the political level, but again, it seems like there's a way to fix this from a planning perspective for the unique circumstance we're in.
It seems that the goal here is to ensure that houses are built on those lots that are compatible with the adjacent houses on the west side. And maybe I'm missing something here, but I'm not hearing a way to achieve that goal. If we deny the rezone, my understanding is we're going to have smaller homes, which won't necessarily be compatible with the homes on the west side of 21st Street.
Mr. Sudbeck did say that the product probably won't change either way. Is that basically what you said?
Well, no, if we go with the RS-72, it will become smaller. We'll be in that probably eleven, twelve hundred square foot range.
And the difference of that is because he's got the smaller, a larger side yard setback, and you'll have houses probably fourteen feet apart rather than ten feet apart.
So, the question is, is it more compatible to have the setbacks that go with the RS-72 zone, or is it more compatible to live with the lesser setbacks and have larger homes that presumably would be more compatible with the homes?
Mr. Sudbeck, can you correct me if I'm wrong? If, he's not gonna build the homes that are compatible with the other RS-72 lots?
They'll be smaller than the easterly lots as well.
No matter what, whether the rezone request is denied or whether it's granted, is that...
That's my understanding.
If the request is granted, then we match exactly what's on the easterly lots. If it's denied, then we go to, we have to go to a smaller product.
So, again, there's really no way to get to lots that are, lots and homes that are compatible with the nearby properties on the west side?
At this point, probably not with them having already started constructing the house on Lot 2. If it were all a blank slate, then it could be done by replating the six into five, but having that Lot 2 with something on it in the middle of that stretch of houses or lots, it may not happen. Hard to do, I think.
Mr. Sudbeck, if I, I guess we can't, if we make a motion to hold over, the application doesn't change, does it?
It would have to be a new application because we'd have to re-advertise the different zoning request.
Mr. Sudbeck, would you have a preference if you had a motion for denial, which would move this forward to the City Council and you can take their argument there, or you could withdraw and maybe apply for the RS-72 PS on that one lot, or maybe on all five lots?
I mean, yeah, we would apply for all five lots. That's balanced. We want to build a consistent product with what we've already started with is our ultimate goal. We don't wanna come in and put a smaller, a smaller product in. We really don't. I mean, we don't wanna be put in that position where that's what we have to do.
The effect would be the same.
Effect would be the same. Well...
If you went to, if the council approved the RD sixty, it'd be the same as them approving an RS-72 PS with the reduced setbacks on all five lots. There'd be no difference between those two.
The difference is he's coming out of this commission with a recommendation for denial the council has to overturn versus if he waits a month. And again, I guess, Mr. Shuchek, we're putting you on the spot, but if he came in with a application to make lots 22, 23, 1, 26, and 27 RS-72 PS, which would be consistent with those lots you pointed out in Spring Creek, you think you could be supportive of that? Probably a few things to study here, but...
My initial thought is, like I said, it gives you the same result as the RD sixty, which we are opposed to.
Well, how do, what culpability do we as a city have for approving a plat with a sixty-foot frontage that cannot be built upon?
I don't know.
That's my issue. There's an equitable argument here that we're part of the problem and we gotta help come up with a solution. You know, the folks who bought bonds to support this, they supported it based on the number of lots that are out there because to Mr. Sudbeck's point, each lot is worth a certain amount of money, and each lot that sells supports paying down a certain amount of the bond. So, we're gonna, I mean, there's bigger ripples here than just, hey, we screwed the developer out of one lot.
But you could also argue if those were all RS-72 lots, bigger lots, they'd have a bigger house on them with more value on them. Well...
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how those...
And there's owned RS-72, and he's going, "Let me build what I wanna build." And we got one that doesn't, doesn't meet the standard here is the problem. So, again, Mr. Shuchek, you're suggesting you get the same result, but again, would you be supportive of an RS-72 PS, or is that something you wanna think about?
I think we'd have to think about that.
Mr. Sudbeck, you willing to hold over for a month, or you got something pending that you gotta get a decision tonight on?
Well, we have a pending contract, but we've told them that until we get clarification on our zoning, we can't sign the, you know, sign the contract.
I don't know where the vote would go tonight, Mr. Sudbeck. I would be happy to make a motion to hold this over for a month and see if we can work something out, but if you would rather not have me make that motion, I will let someone else on the commission...
Well, we're definitely better off moving forward with a recommendation rather than a denial. So, I mean, I would say we could wait a month if there's some grounds to maybe move forward in a positive direction for us on that.
Mm-hmm. Well, with that, is there any further discussion? Otherwise, I'd be happy to make a motion to hold this over for a date certain.
One point, if I may interrupt you to making your motion, is if this is held over one month, this exact proposal would be held over one month. So, the proposal to deny...
But he could withdraw.
He could withdraw in favor of something staff discusses and comes forward, ideally maybe a PS if they can be supportive of that.
Our alternative is to deny.
Yeah.
Or to approve.
If you hold it over for a month, unless he withdraws it, it would come back to you, this proposal in December. Tomorrow is our deadline for the December Planning Commission meeting. If you wish to make a request for an RS-72 PS on one or all of the lots, we need that tomorrow. And then, you know, I don't know what you do, you know...
Well, the ballpark isn't just his to make the application. I mean, there's gotta be some discussions and you gotta get comfortable as to...
Yeah, but we need to have him make that application.
Apply. But is there a meeting date for December 21st?
But if the RS-72 PS is used, isn't the net effect the same as granting the rezone to the RD sixty?
Other than, well, no, because you'd be reducing the side yard setbacks on that, so...
So, there would be a difference?
No.
There would not be a difference?
If he requests the reduced setbacks with his PS, which would be the reason for the PS, is really the same, and that's the initial comment I gave to Mr. Ackley when he asked about it, you know, we were opposed to the RD sixty on this side, changing it to RS-72 PS, which is the same, basically the same as the RD sixty, you know?
It's the same.
It's the same, yeah.
So, if we were to, sorry to drag this out, Mr. Ashley, to your possible...
I'm a little hurt my emotions.
We've been very good spirited tonight, and I appreciate you continuing that. If a commissioner was to make a motion to approve this to RD sixty, then it would go forward as an approval to the City Council?
Staff recommendation would continue as a denial.
Correct.
With a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission.
May I ask a question while we're considering that?
Please.
To the developer, please. So, I just had a clarification. So, right now, we're saying that the lots that are to the west of 21st Street are in the ballpark value of, after construction's built, 325 to 375? Is that what I understood correctly?
Yes.
And those in the RD sixty are 250 to 280?
250 to 275. They're gonna all vary depending on amenities and size and everything, but yes.
That's about the average. And so, for the contracts that you've already received that are within these six lots, I guess, what ballpark were those falling within? Within the 325 to 375 or the 250 to 280?
The 250 to 280.
Okay, so it's already consistent with the RD sixty then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the issue, if I believe, is because those lots visually are smaller, you gotta put a smaller product on them. And we platted them that way. Or you platted them that way. We all platted them that way.
So, with that added discussion, does that change a potential motion that you might be making, Mr. Ashley?
You know, Mr. Jacobson, you have a way of putting a burr under a saddle that eventually works, right?
So, I've been told many times.
I'm gonna make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning request for RG sixty based upon the result being the same if we go through the process of an RS-72 PS and based upon the fact that otherwise, we currently have an unbuildable lot that we as a city approved.
I will second that.
Second?
I took the second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's very rare for me to...
I thought it was a request.
It's very, very rare for me as in position to chair personally to make a motion or second because you guys do all the good work, so, but in this case, I will make a second. Commissioners, vote, a vote yes is for approval of lots 22, 23, 26, and 27 to change from RS-72 to RD sixty. Did I get that correct?
And lots one and two of the replat one.
Thank you, and lots one and two as well.
All six lots.
All six lots.
Paul and Terry, your vote is not there.
Sorry, I'm still thinking.
Does everybody need to vote again?
Yeah, they will.
Are you ready to vote?
Okay, I'm ready.
The vote is five to one. Motion carries.
Okay, so the motion carries, which means that this is a recommendation to approve the lots 22, 23, 26, 27, the lots one and two of the replat. It will go to the City Council on December 11th, correct, and with the recommendation of the commissioners to approve and a recommendation from the staff of denial. Thank you.
Mr. Cook, thank you for attending. So, you can explain all of this to the council and the great discussion we had. It's an interesting issue.